Okay, so it is 7:02, we will call the meeting to order. So let us begin with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
So welcome everyone to our city council meeting, tonight is Monday, November 6th. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from October 16th meeting. Vance, can you give us a quick heads up on those?
Do you want me to read them?
Sure, are they long?
Uh, well, not too bad.
Okay.
We bet on October 16th. Everyone present, the minutes from October 2nd were approved by Dave, second by John. Consent approved by John, second by Brian. The regular agenda, we had an addition approved by John and second by Brian. Under Onsted Twitchell, the resolution authorized the issuance of issuance and the sale of bonds for the SSL approved by first motion from Brian and second by Dave, all were in favor. The water rate ordinance, second reading, approved by John, second by Dave, all in favor. And we're going to discuss the new rates at the next meeting, but I, it's not on the agenda tonight. Interstate engineering, Deer Creek, pipe is being fused. Control panels for lift stations, in order, KPH has a temp panel made until permanent, a permanent panel is made, probably extension for completion into next year. Lost River will be completed this year. The pedestrian crossing received no response from the residents. We will put it out, we will pull it out and go over again in the spring. Lost River, extension of thirteen more days due to weather, warrant township. Concerned about the road. City force to repair this road to the original condition along with 200 yards of class five gravel. The money dedicated for this repair already in the contract. Jack Dwyer, house move-in date, Jack presented the email he sent to the council and would like to move in earlier once all contingencies are met. The council will agree on it. Knowing that Lucas and John will be writing up an agreement with Jack, Jim and Lucas will be getting together to go over and sign it. This was approved by Brian and second by John. Under portfolios, Sharon will talk with Jason Benson tomorrow about the diversion road. Grant seven sum makers, apps are due to Metro Cog Park and Rec. Not seventeen, it's eighteen funds. Waterfowl, Vance will review his email as well. Mr. Fanlon, county accessory contract, we will review it, we will, the next meeting we will review the approval. The accessory agreement is twenty years, Cascon will pay fifty, we pay five years, we have five years to pay for it. The city administrator, fifty to fifty-five thousand a year, approved by first motion from Brian and second by John. All were in favor, Brian, no report. Corey in Vision, update, went over ideas, what we came up with, he went over some various ideas. There was a discussion on diversion back in, I don't get that, wondering if we need to send a note to Doug, I don't know who Doug is, on behalf of the city about keeping the road where it is, not going further any, any farther north. Vance and Corey will write up a letter to the owner of Freed Trailer Park. Under the auditor, the shut-off notices are updated and Mateo has taken over the job, posting everything on SharePoint. Council, please let us know if you would like us to do things same, different or whatever. This is housekeeping and we can handle it in our office. Financials will be out next week, working on cash flow, shut off individuals that have been left far too long.
I have one comment on that Vance, on the Ped Crossing, it was lack of contractors, we didn't receive any quotes from contractors, not residents.
Okay, which one is that Jim?
Uh, the Ped Crossing.
Oh, okay.
It was, we didn't receive any quotes, uh, we did receive one extension and, or a request for an extension and even if, if and after that time, they didn't get any quotes back, it was just the wrong time of year for it and
Yeah.
everyone that I had talked to had either indicated that it was, uh, they had trouble getting it done this year and would be more than willing to bid on it in the spring, so I was, we recommend to re, uh, bit, re-quote it in the spring, so.
Yeah, winter is here early, so that makes sense.
Well, yeah, it is.
So the only other, the only other change Vance would be on the minutes, the water you talked about? Was it the water rates? Vance, you said we talk about it at the next meeting, let's just put, we'll talk about it at a future meeting. Or we can put that on tonight's agenda maybe, to talk about it, or to not talk about it.
And I, I had a question on Sharon, your report section, there was a, the last sentence there, waterfall, Vance will review this email, I don't know what that means.
There was a letter we received from one of, from one of the grants we got for putting in a shared juice path and they wanted to know if the area where the path was going to be would impact any waterfowl.
Oh, really, okay, great.
So, we just have to send them a sentence that says, no waterfowl will be impacted by this.
Is that the tracks to trail one or the other one?
The, the rec trails one, yeah.
Oh, it's the rec trails one, okay.
So, that was it. So I, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
John makes-
Second.
Second.
And Brian seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, any questions on the consent?
I can't pull up anything, so, did you guys see it on the SharePoint?
I can't hear, I-
Okay. Can you hear?
Yeah, I can't, I can't hear the here Vance, it's really hard.
Okay, um, since I can't present anything, the consent is on the SharePoint?
Yeah, yeah, I, I got it open.
Okay, do you have any questions?
Not looking through right now, no, I don't, don't see anything that looks unusual.
Okay, I am going to open them as well. John, you have any questions?
No, I have no comments.
No, they don't seem unusual. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the invoices?
So.
Second.
So you have that Mateo, Brian makes the motion, John seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is to approve the regular agenda.
How's your timeframe tonight Brian?
I'm, if we could try and keep it within close to an hour, in the best case scenario, but, so if we can keep it moving.
Okay, I think we were talking earlier of moving the interstate engineering report to the next meeting, is that correct, Jim?
We already did that, we took it off the agenda.
Okay, because it's on the copy that's back there.
Oh, it wasn't on mine, from back there. So we should have the proposal for Horseshoe Bend, Olivia's Acres, Water Meters, and then the change order for the SSL, those four items.
You want to talk about tonight?
Yes, I'd like to get through the-
We still need to talk about those proposals, right Jim?
Yep, I, yes Brian.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with the agenda, so I, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Okay, Lucas, you're up.
Good evening council, um, the first thing I have is rezone for Lost River fourth addition. Councilman Schmidt, can you hear me?
Brian, can you hear Lucas?
Uh, it's a little hard, so he can get closer to the microphone.
He's talking right into the microphone.
Okay, oh, yeah, I'm on the phone, so never mind, keep going.
Okay, so these are not working?
No.
No.
Nothing's on, like-
But you can just leave it up there, Jackson ended up talking, but, um, I can come in closer.
Well, we're having a public hearing, so that's the first-
Yeah, we're having a, a public hearing for Lost River fourth addition, um, so we'll have tonight a rezone and then the preliminary plat. So the first thing we'll address is the rezone, um, and it's, Lost River fourth addition really is just three lots added into the area of Lost River second, downwards.
So we will open the public hearing at 7:13 PM.
And just so the council is aware, the planning commission recommended approval of the rezone on October 24th.
Do we have anyone here that wants to speak or has a comment in reference to the rezone?
Can I see it?
I'm sure we're not.
Yeah, it's, please. So yeah, I guess for right now it would just be discussing the rezone and that's to, to change those lots to R6. I believe they're zoning R2 right now.
They'd be zoning egg.
They're egg, yeah, because they're outside of the plat.
They're zoning dig now?
Correct.
So, anyone here to speak on the rezone? If no one's here, has any comments, then we will close the public hearing at 7:14. Then we'll move on to the next item, which is-
So you don't want to take any action on that?
No, I don't think we're going to vote on it until we have everyone here, that was the agreement. Since we only have the three of us and Brian's on the phone, we'll do the hearing.
Okay, um, so then the next item I have would be the preliminary plat for Lost River fourth and that's the document that I just handed you, showing those three lots on there.
Then we will open the public hearing at 7:15 PM. Is anyone here to speak or comment on the preliminary plat for Lost River fourth? Any comments John, nothing? Okay, if there's no comments, then we'll close the public hearing at, it's still 7:15 PM, so.
Okay, so with that, um, those will be tabled then to November 20th, where the council can, um, take action on the rezone and then the preliminary plat. So the next item, um, and actually the last item I have is the issuance of building permits in Lost River. Um, there were some items that needed to be addressed, it sounds like they have been addressed. I didn't want Perry or the engineers to have to make a determination as to whether or not the city should issue building permits, so I wanted that decision to come from the city council. That is why I put it on the agenda, so I think the city council should be the ones that determine whether or not Perry is authorized to issue building permits in Lost River. And I think Jim can speak more to the list of items.
Sure, sure, I sent out an email, I reviewed the site this afternoon, sent out an email and all the items that were on that list have been taken care of in one way, shape or form. They've either been completed, which the bulk of them have, or the streetlights were won and they started tipping them up today and they're going to work on them progressively, so that item is knocked off the list. I did take Perry-
Regarding this, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say one more thing, that I did take Perry out there last Friday, drove him through the site, showed him where everything was, showed him what needed to be done, what was done, and at that time he didn't have any, any, uh, comments other than, um, his concerns were ma, oh, the property pins were in on the sole lots too, that was one of the other things too. That work was completed on Friday, so that was one of Perry's concerns and that was being put in as I took him out there, so.
The what pins?
The property pins for the sole lots.
In my, in my conversations with, with different folks, it's been a case where, I think as long as we have, uh, plans and, you know, KPH has said that they will be able to get, you know, sanitary system hooked up so that those homes can be, uh, uh, you know, livable in the next few months, I guess, I, I'm okay with issuing permits as, you know, for construction. We just won't allow any certificates of occupancy until all the requirements have been met, correct?
Correct, and one of those requirements would be, um, having sewer hookups, and so if there's no sewer available, then you obviously can't issue the, the CO on that.
Correct, correct, so, I mean, the, the assumption is right now is that KPH will, will be able to deliver on, uh, the construction project to, to hook up to the, the lagoons at a minimum by, you know, and I don't know if we need to put a specific date on this, you know, to let the permit owners know that, you know, that, that they won't, can't get a certificate of occupancy until these, this requirement has been met? You know, I don't know how we-
I mean, I think that's definitely something that Perry could tell them, if we want to put it on the, the building permits is another thing.
I don't think it's necessary to do that, uh, according to get a CO, you have to have a working toilet, it's pretty self-explanatory. I want, you're going to cause some unnecessary dialogue, potentially that could mislead people and confuse them, more so than help any situation.
Can you hear that Councilman Schmidt?
Yeah, I can hear that, yeah.
Okay.
The, the last update that we got about four o'clock this afternoon from KPH was that the lift station would be in temporary control by, possibly by the end of next week. Next week would be the installation of the lift station, it says, um, uh, for the week of the 13th, we will continue to bore into the temporary manual, so the segment of project will be completed by the end of that week. KPH plans to dig the sanitary sewer lift station in at Lost River, also the week of the 13th and will have that completed by the end of that week as well. KPH owns a temporary control panel pumps that will allow the lift station to be functional after we install the structure, so within the next two weeks, a temporary lift station will be operational at Lost River. That might be a little bit aggressive, but it's a timeframe that was provided by the contractor.
I mean, the point is, as long as, you know, as long as there's something that's going to be deliverable in the next, you know, next two months, I'm, I'm okay with issuing some tech, you know, the permits for, to allow construction to continue.
Okay, so then what I would be looking for is a motion then to authorize Perry to issue building permits in Lost River.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
The, the only contingency that I, that we as a city have to look at is when Perry's issuing building permits, that we have to ensure to ourselves that in the middle of the winter, that he's making sure that anybody doing construction is not doing it in frozen ground. Because we certainly don't want any homes being built on frozen ground where they haven't thawed it and done, taken the proper precautions. That's just a side, that's a side door.
Yeah, I think that's just the construction thing.
Yeah, it is a construction thing, but you know, it's, when you're talking about winter time, that's really, that's really the concern I have, more than, I'm not so worried about the contractor finishing the sanitary sewer. I expect that to be done in advance of those homes being ready to get a CO.
But with, with the-
And obviously we can't provide a CO-
Contract and the homeowner, that's between them, with the house, that's not-
That's a part of the, doing the inspections, right, whoever's responsible for doing the inspections along, during construction, right?
Yep.
So, I, I'm assuming, I don't know, Perry's doing those inspections or somebody else doing it, they just need to understand both those requirements. Right?
Right, so we have a motion on the table to enable the issuance of building permits in Lost River.
I think Brian and I said it at the same time.
Brian, did you-
All right, I'll second it then.
John, are you first?
No.
I guess, you conceded.
Need a way.
So we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That is all I have for tonight.
Motion passes. Jim?
Yes, all right, we'll get through these quick, we do have three engineering proposals for your, uh, review, you're at your request. Uh, the first one I believe is for Horseshoe Bend, as I might, as you might recall, that Horseshoe Bend has petitioned the city to, uh, provide sanitary sewer service to their subdivision. Uh, this proposal is for the study and the plans and specs of the said project to incorporate them into the city sanitary sewer system via probably the SSL. That would be one of the most logical proposals, so, uh, these proposals were sent out, uh, week, eh, well, uh, well, Thursday, wasn't it Mateo? I sent them all Thursday?
Yes.
Sent them all Thursday, they should be in your packets or whatever, so. But like I said, this is a, this is the opportune time to do the work, because in the winter, so.
So this, this is just to, to assess everything and come up with a recommended design for-
This is, this is thr, this is, uh, multiple phases, this is for an engineering study that is required. It is for the engineering services, which would be for the plant, the design and plans and specifications, and for the construction engineering of the project provided it would be to go forward, so. Uh, there are three phases in the, in the proposal and it's a five-page document.
So-
And to do in, okay, go ahead John.
My, my comment Jim is-
Yeah.
We're, you know, we visited the other day, we were talking about, you know, the developments coming up that are going to be asking for potential hookup to our SSL. How, you know, how's this all going to be put together, what's the cost of it, just to plan, who's going to get hookup? I mean, are we going to-
We haven't addressed, we haven't addressed any other subdivisions than the two that have requested the service. So that would be outside of the scope of these, these three, to sit down and plan with the other subdivisions along the propos, the route.
And, and that's kind of what we were talking about, is what makes sense for the city to hook up to where, when the development wants it, what's going to be? We can't take on everything with that, that line at Deer Creek.
Right, right.
So what, what is the stage, is what is the plan going to be? I, I think we've got to be a little aware of what's our potential on this and what does make sense. Do we need to start at the north and work south, do we need to start, I, I mean, what's-
Well, the guidance that has been set forth in the past is first come, first served. So we do have these requests in front of us, so in order to, um, fulfill their requests, I guess that's kind of how we've been taking it. But there could be in a future time, some way of going around and seeing what the potential is for each of those individual subdivisions, but-
And I just see if development here is interested, then down here, I mean, I get first come, first served.
Mm-hmm.
But is, is that cost-effective to everybody?
Probably not.
And that's where I'd like to see us work more on an overall plan of how eventually everything would be hooked up.
Right, that, that was kind of my point, is there, the engineering study, does that have to be done by each individual development, or can that be done across multiple developers? To save some of the cost, because that was, that was my question with this, is it seems like a fairly, fairly high cost for getting the, the design in place, not necessarily getting the construction going.
Sure, uh, they will be going two different places, so one, Olivia's Acres would be one that would go towards the lagoons for now, and then from the lagoons that we push into the SSL if we choose to do that. And Olivia, and Horseshoe Bend is on the far north side of town, so that would be probably directed directly into the SSL closer to that 64th Avenue area, so.
So I think, I think what they're-
That's thinking as if we give Olivia's Acres and Horseshoe Bend together because they're moving north, do, do we have to do that engineering-
Olivia's might not go north Brian.
Engineering study on each of them, is that, is there a way to save some of those costs?
Olivia Acres might not go north though, Olivia's Acres is going to go to the lagoon first.
Huh?
Because it's on the south side of town.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm thinking of something different, I'm, I'm thinking of Adelman's, sorry.
Oh, no, no, no. No, Olivia's is down on 100th.
Right, right, I'm, if you have, I was thinking the wrong development.
I would agree with you, if it was Adelman's up north, yes, then we should plan the two together, but they aren't going to the same place.
That's the thing, is, is do we, do we start our process now, or do we try and get more engaged from all the residents to defray some of these costs?
Well, I think that's your question Brian, is would it defray the cost if we were looking at other developments in the area of-
Sure.
Horseshoe Bend, would it make sense to go out and specifically ask those other developments, would you be interested, and then make one study for all of them, is that what you're asking?
Right, exactly. Because if we have to do this, this impact study, you know, then if we're, if we're cut, including more homes other than just what's in Horseshoe Bend, does it, you know, reduce that overall cost? Because, I mean, I just, my first thought was looking at the, the Horseshoe Bend report, it seemed like a lot of money, and we haven't even touched, moved any ground yet.
Which number are you looking at Brian?
So, I'm looking at the, 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 the estimate, well, I'm looking at the, the page four, which is the entering design and right-of-way acquisition cost.
Yeah, that's for plans and specifications, the study is the, is the third page, item number eight.
That's a fifteen thousand, that's fifteen thousand. And then you're expecting that the constructions cost would be seventy-four?
Uh, for inspection, yep, for construction, for the contract administration, yep, for construction.
Okay, so the, the overall cost would be like the sum of all of those numbers?
That would be the total engineering on the project, correct.
That, that's expected right now?
Yep.
And again, it's just a, it's a rough estimate.
Yep, yep.
Uh, okay, I was thinking that, that was, that amount was just for-
No.
Getting the design in place.
No, 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 the three phases, there's the study, the design and the preparation of the plans and specifications, and then the construction inspection.
Okay, all right.
So the, the more, the broader you make the study, there is the potential for the cost to go up, depending upon how it relates to, to the one area, you know, if you've got to incorporate it bigger.
Especially for the, for the construction costs and so forth, but not necessarily for the impact study, right?
Right, because we, yeah, you're right, we could solicit more, more than, we could solicit only once, the multiple agencies, yes, I know what you're saying, yep.
So if we said, okay, we want to take another development south of Horseshoe Bend, for example?
Yep.
And to have it hook up, you know, that, that could be included in that fifteen thousand?
I think as long as it doesn't get out of hand, sure.
I'm sorry, say again?
Uh, as long as, I would say as long as it doesn't get drastically larger, yeah, I would say you're right.
Well, so, yeah, from Horseshoe Bend, you've got, I don't know, one, two, how many developments right in that area?
I'd like to see a little more work done ahead of time on some opportunities here before we move ahead on this one.
I mean, I think we could, we could do a study that would encompass-
I would like to get some motion to get more developments, you know, to see if there's more interest in getting this site.
Once, once we approve one, we're kind of going to get sucked into it, where potentially it could be done one at a time, and I don't see it being cost-effective and I, I think we need to have a better plan.
Is it a case where once I do the entry impact study for one area, that it can be used for some of the others in the same area, or is it by one?
Parts of it could be reused, I would say, there would be different, different, different aspects that would have to be modified to the certain areas, but-
I'm just, I'm just thinking about the required pieces that we have to do, if there's a way to minimize the required costs.
Sure.
Now hopefully I can explain what I'm thinking here, so if we're looking at an engineering study plan for Horseshoe Bend, if you were to incorporate another development next to it, behind it, around it, or two of them, wouldn't that impact the whole study of how Horseshoe Bend would go together? Could it increase or decrease the cost of Horseshoe Bend? That's my whole, maybe sums it up better, what I'm concerned with.
Sure.
Is how does a whole, it, eventually, how does a whole map lay out?
Okay, so, so my question then is if we want to look at this as a whole, how do we answer those who have requested the service? Do we say we aren't going to provide it until we have the whole area done?
No, I, I, I don't know if that's necessarily the answer either, I, I think we need a little more information, a little more game plan on what's around it.
So you have in here the time schedule to do the study, is a hundred and eighty days, which is essentially six months. So that really means, it means nothing else is going to happen till after that point in time anyway.
Right, and if you would choose to use some form of estate funding, there's comment periods in there, there's solicitation periods in there, you lose a month in your comment period, you have a month in your solicitation period, that, it, it adds up quickly.
But I think what I'm saying is if we started- But I think what I'm saying is if we started today, six months from today is May. Alright, so saying to those folks who may ask that we're gonna do a study, but have a little bit larger focus area?
I don't think it would take that long to do, to be honest. I don't think it would take the hundred and eighty days. I think that it could be done sooner than that, but it is in here, so. Let me look at that a little bit. So to save time, what would you guys, as the commission, like? What would you want to come back with? Do we want a proposal to look at the entire area by Horseshoe Bend? All that area? You want to study for just that area? What, what, what would you like us to present to that, to fulfill the, the petition for services?
When we did that, well actually, when you put together the information, public information meeting on the SSL, we had representation from all up and down.
Yep.
So we know what's potentially people are gonna be asking for.
Right.
You know, I, I think if we were kind of pleasantly surprised by the positive input, that people were excited about it for their developments or the potential availability. So I think it's maybe, makes sense to try to look at a lot of the area versus one. And I'd say come back with a different proposal.
And I don't know if this is a letter that goes out to all those residents? You know, that would be, you know, possibilities to hook up to that SSL? To, to ask, you know, cause that was, that was the challenge we placed on them when we were doing the SSL meeting in May or June, whenever it was, uh, to have a discussion as a development to decide if they wanted this going forward. So now we're essentially, okay, let's, let's force this question and help them move it along, right? So how do we, how do we collect that feedback? Is it literally a letter to each of those homes to, to get that feedback and say, okay, here's a development and here's the interest, or do we ask those residents to petition the city to, to get that moving along? What do you, what do you recommend?
Uh, we've asked everyone to petition so far. That's why Horseshoe did, Olivia's Acres has, Lost River has, Terragardens has, and so has Vistos for that industrial sub. So those are the ones that have petitioned, they're the ones that we've provided the information to.
I think you even step it up into another informational meeting. Cause this impacts opportunity to hook up to a West Fargo line up on Fifty-second, or, or is it gonna instigate another hookup on Forty-Fifth? I mean, I think this is a huge undertaking here. And, and I think some more informational meetings, public meetings might be well worth our while.
But in the meantime, I mean, the, to expedite the process, sending a letter out- and asking people to petition to the city if you're interested in connecting, that's the, the necessary step.
I think so.
A public-
So you're just, you're just saying, don't send out to people that are interested?
Put it on the website, but you still need a letter again from people.
Yeah, you need-
You need a petition of some sort. Brian, what did you say?
I, I, do we, do we start both of those additions? Do we- So what you're saying Sharon, is we essentially proceed with the proposals that are in play already, and then continue to pursue other developments? Take care of the ones that have been proactive and, and sent in the petitions like we asked?
I'd say we table the two we have and, and put together a better game plan for the whole non-city sewer service right now at this time.
Well, then we're delaying, but then we're, to Sharon's point, we're delaying everything.
Well, if Jim says it won't take a hundred and eighty days, delaying it one month, or-
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay if, if we delay one month and then, you know, we take action this month to get a letter or something out there, get the word out there to say, okay, people, we need this to happen.
Lucas?
Uh, I think for sure with the Olivia's Acres one, you have interest from, from them obviously, and from Vistos. How many more developments, I guess, are you looking for? Cause I know they want to start construction in the spring, and if there's delays in this, especially like you're saying, if it is a hundred and eighty days or whatever, then we're gonna be dealing with that again.
Well, but you've got down there, you have Country Acres as well.
I know, so what I'm saying though, for that, there's, there's three basically. You know, Vistos is in, and then Olivia's Acres is in.
Well, I think you're also taking the north and the south as two different areas, is the way I look at it, in my head.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think delaying it a month, if it's not gonna take a hundred and eighty days, and Jim was just writing that, but you know, you really, how long do you really think it's gonna take Jim?
It just depends, yeah. It just depends on how many, how much interest we have, you know, the more interest, the more work it's gonna take to get it all-
I mean, if you did a study that took that whole southern area, so Country Acres and you know, kind of everything down there, and said, okay, what if they all wanted to?
We have flows for build-out that have been calculated as part of the SSL, so that, we have that data. So it'd be incorporating that into the proposal, say, for Olivia's Acres, which wouldn't take much, in my mind. I, I don't know a timeframe, I, I hate to put a timeframe on it, just because it's kind of a moving target. If it's just Olivia's Acres, it won't take much. Olivia's countryside, whatever, even, there's some of that land north of a hundred there. And then if Stokes would, if Kim would wanna petition the city to get this, or even further to the south and the west, for his potential work, that would be, add time to it too, so.
That makes sense.
What?
To put those together in the south and do one in the north.
And that's, that's, yeah, I mean, if you want to-
We're pretty limited down south.
We are. Olivia's is the big drive. Olivia's is the big push. They are also the ones that have the quickest timeframe of any of them. So-
Well, they do, because they're the ones that have the immediate need.
Correct. So we could, you could table the one for Horseshoe. They have petition, but we can look at that as a general whole. The Olivia's one, I don't know if we, they don't have any way of being serviced right now. Horseshoe Bend does. They have their private system. Olivia's Acres doesn't. So that one would be a much-
But the other thing is the engineering study cost for Olivia's is only five thousand. So that one is significantly less than the other one.
Small, it's a smaller area, cause then the Horseshoe Bend one does encompass, encompass quite a bit of area. Whereas Olivia's, it's all plotted, plans are done for the construction of the subdivisions, so.
Okay.
However the council wishes to proceed is what we will do.
I'd like to see one in the south that would encompass Olivia's Acres, Vistos, and-
So do you wanna, well, let's, let's look at Horseshoe Bend first. Do we wanna hold that one off for, table that for a month, and in the meantime, have Vance and Mateo get, work with, work with Brian to get letters out to residents for-
Yep.
Regarding the SSL, get it up on the city website. We can get it in Horace Happenings. But really that, that, so we'll table that. Table to December meeting. So there'll be no motion-
Right.
Regarding that proposal.
And the city will get letters to the potential neighborhoods or subdivisions about interest.
So then if we move on to the engineering proposal for Olivia's Acres, John, is your, what is your-
I'd be willing to accept that one.
Is your, what is the motion then? To, to do a, to modify, to ask Jim to modify the proposal to include, or is he, is that what you're asking him to do?
Realistically, Country Acres is, you're talking monster lots out there, right? I mean, Vistos, we have to get online, correct?
Uh, Vistos is, they're installing some septic tanks right now for an interim. I talked to Irwin today. He stopped by the office, he said they would be interested in hooking up to city water, their city sewer. The water is in place right now for Vistos through, we're a bulk user to Casper Water, and he said that they would be interested in, in sewer service. Cause I told him that we do have a proposal to get the Olivia's Acres, he said they would be part of that, or they would be interested in that.
But thinking future, if they're to got an interim, what's the, is there a need for them to get involved in this study right now? For the simple fact, you know, coming around, going east on a hundredth or somewhere else, is that gonna be a separate time to work with that at that time?
I think that the Vistos one, being that they right now have the ability for septic, might be, like you say, a separate one. I, I, he can, Irwin can say he wants to, to hook up to it, but if he sees a cost or something, he'd say, may, maybe we wanna live out the lifespan of these septic tanks a little bit more. You know, get a little further into that, so.
So in other words, we need something in writing from him in order to say he's part of-
He did submit a letter, but it's, it's, he was more interested in the water. So, but the Olivia's one, I do think that is the most critical one, just because they want to get going on it from-
Let's move forward on that, on Olivia's. Just keep that separate.
So Brian, what do you think?
I'm having a little bit of a hard time, but I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this drop plan to propose, or to postpone. I, I think it makes sense to do that.
What are your thoughts on going forward with Olivia's Acres, considering they're-
Yeah, yeah, cause that's a higher priority, getting that area, you know, and, and for Vistos as well, right?
Maybe.
We talked a little bit about that Brian. They do have some provisions in for septic tank now, so it might not be as high a priority, but Irwin indicated that he was interested in connecting this afternoon when he stopped by the office to talk about some things, so.
But, but Olivia's Acres is a higher priority-
Correct.
Cause their construction is planning next spring, right?
Yes, yes. And we've been telling them that they would, we would, earliest we could get them serviced would be spring of eighteen.
Yeah, I, I'm okay, cause I think, you know, that, that, those engineering costs and everything for Olivia's Acres and the impact, because you know, it's a smaller, it's not that they're currently developed area, so I think, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the proposal for Olivia's Acres? Motion from John?
I'll second it.
Second from Brian? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes? So Jim, your next item?
The next one is, we have a proposal for the study, the plans and specs, and the construction administration for the water meter replacement project. Uh, to this date, we've been directed by the council to prepare the SRF documents. Those are being worked on right now. Our, our comment period closed, uh, the end of the week last week. Now it's putting it all into their, to the facility plan and whatever else. So this would be to prepare the plans and specs to move forward with replacing the water meters with a remote reed water meter.
Yes.
I, I would approve, I'd somewhat to, to keep you moving.
Second.
So Brian made the motion to approve the water meter replacement project. John makes the second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
No.
I hear no further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Alright, the last thing on the docket for me is the cha- there's a change order number one for the SSL project. It includes the installation of the lift station wet well in Lost River. Lost River was bid with the wet well being a, either a change order item to that project, or a change order item to the, to the SSL project. It talks with Jack, discussions with him, and the health department. It has decided that it would, they would prefer it to be part of the SSL project. Uh, it is, if you see on there, you don't have it up in front of you, but it's an addition of a hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. That's for all the work necessary to install the wet well in the Lost River. This will be installed next week. The SSL project already includes the valve vault that goes outside of the wet well and the components for the lift station, but uh, this wet well was to be installed prior to, um, the project. Being that the same contractor got both jobs, they wanted to push it, move it back to fit in with their, with their sequencing, so. That's the way it's presented. There also is an increase of fourteen calendar days on this to, to get the work done. The typical construction season, according to the DOT, ends on November fifteenth of the year, and that's when time is suspended. You can still work past that date, but you don't get charged any little time for it. So the days are assessed on the fifteenth, from the fifteenth of April, that's when construction time starts in the spring, the April fifteenth. So it'll be fourteen days on the fifteenth, which moves the completion date to April twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, so. This will, eighteen, son of a gun, you're right. I'll have to fix that. Yep, yep.
Well, wait a minute now, so you have seven twenty, twenty eighteen?
Yep, it's, it, the days are suspended. We already had a completion date in November fifteenth, Brian. So that's when they typically stop charging time to the contractor. If they work past that, good for them. And it starts back up on the fifteenth of April, so we add fourteen days to April, and I-
But it's, it's basically that the, the bid date and time is the update to in April of twenty eighteen?
Yep.
Okay, alright, so the, the putting the seven twenty seventeen was just a mistake?
Yes, I made a mistake. I did.
So the, on this change order-
Yep.
Jim, where it says substantial completion, it says April twenty eighth seventeen.
That should be eighteen, yes.
Cause otherwise-
So the intention is, is that, that work is gonna continue? I mean, this is additional work, but they're planning to, they can continue this this winter?
Their plan is to have this done in the next two weeks. This is that wet well section that-
So just, just legally, we can only say it can be done before April twenty eighth, right?
Yep, yep. It just, it, it goes on to the completion date of the project.
Okay, so technically, there is our date for when, uh, you know, tentative where change, uh, certain occupancy could, cannot be issued today, you know, before this date, April twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, until, you know, unless something changes?
No, because this lift station will be temporarily into along Wall Avenue, so this will be in operation within the next month.
Okay, so how do, how do we, how do we say that legally this way, so we don't get into trouble?
I'm looking at the attorney.
I don't know what you're trying to do, I'm gonna be honest.
So-
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, basically we're protecting ourselves, right, from if for some reason the project can't complete, you know, that we are not, you know, in an issue with these homeowners, you know, so that they know, if things go the way it's planned, you know, as it's specked out, this project won't be done till the end of April. But we've been doing well, but they've told us in good faith that they're planning to finish it early.
But Brian, Brian-
It'll be safe, it'll be temporary permitting, you know, or a permitting process.
Brian, we can't issue a CO until they can flush their toilet. That's all we have to say, period. Don't worry about, this agreement is separate. What we need to worry about with this agreement is getting the dates to be accurate, so that it shows a completion date of twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Because it's signed right now, but it-
They have a specified date, and I'm fine.
So if, if we just make those modifications to this document-
Yes, I will make those changes.
We'll be okay with that.
Yep.
Jim, you can have it.
I will, I will fix my, I will fix my mistake, I promise.
I'd like you to do it tonight.
And it, there's emails from KPH saying that they're gonna try to have it done in the next two weeks, so we can go off of that.
Yes.
So-
Okay, so the point is-
There's a paper trail.
Do we, do we need a special meeting to prove this, after this, or what?
Nope, you can change, prove it right now.
We can approve it right now.
With the modification.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll fix them.
So do we have a motion on the table to approve the change order?
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with the change order. Change, change order with the modified dates.
The date changes, yes. Do we have a second? No.
Shut up.
So we have a motion from Brian and a second by John to approve the change order. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I should ask for further discussion, but no further discussion, so aye. Motion passes.
As a, as a quick note here, I'll give you a little update on the SSL project. They started drilling last week, the first thousand feet from Lost River to the east is in and in place. The connection was made late last Friday. Today, they pushed the next thousand feet, which gets them to about oh, probably three hundred feet from the Cheyenne River. That's their second pull of a thousand feet. They're gonna continue their way eastward until they get to the point on Wall where they can temporary into a, the existing gravity line and have that operational. We did receive a call today from the city of Fargo, and they're having some trouble getting their end of their project done. There's some extensive bypassing that needs to be done, with the temperatures being freezing, there's some apprehension amongst the contractor to, uh, leave temporary sewage bypasses up in cold freezing temperatures without having problems, so. to, uh, leave temporary sewage bypasses up in cold-freezing temperatures without having problems, so, um, city of Fargo did comment that they will, you, the city of Horace will not be required to send any sewage that way this year. It is not anything that they want. Um, what we, what he did ask is that the city prepares something that says that they do not anticipate sending any sewage towards Fargo this year. Right now, we've only got Jack's house online, I think Perry's got, uh, permits for maybe a half a dozen more.
Six or seven.
Half a dozen more, and right now, we can handle that in lagoons, the boys have been operating in lagoons, so we've got room in there. So we don't have to send any sewage to Fargo, and, uh-
So when is the rest of the project expected to be completed from our side?
From our side? That would be that April twentieth, that would be a hundred percent completion done, would be that April date that I messed up on the change order, so.
So do you want, do you want me to send that letter, Jim, or do you wanna send it, or copy me, or how do you wanna do that?
Let's, let's, uh, brainstorm, and I'll send you an email, and you can comment on it.
Okay, all right, that works.
But just to update, update the council and everybody that-
Yeah, Jim, Jim has been asking me the same question, so-
Yep.
And I was like, yeah, I know, I know we're delayed, he, he just gave me a heads up that they're delayed, and I said, well, we're kinda in the same boat, so we're, it's all good.
Yeah, the contractors have actually been talking to, once amongst each other too, about, uh, one of them isn't done yet, are you gonna be pushing us to get done, and vice versa, so.
Well, the que, the question is, when are we, we haven't even started going from the lagoons north.
No, no.
And when are they gonna start that?
Well, that, I'm guessing that unless the weather holds out, it would be spring.
Because, I mean, they promised us it'd be done by November thirtieth.
Yep, they did.
I remember that conversation very well.
And they will be coming, they will be coming after us with, or, coming to me with, uh, information for an extension, and I will be bringing that to you when I receive it, so.
At no cost, because we're not paying because of their delay.
Right, so.
But, and-
And I think just because of Fargo will be done, I don't see why we don't stop, why we wouldn't continue our work.
Right, right, and, and all indications have been that provided the weather holds out, and it doesn't stay below freezing like it has been, they'll, they'll continue working, but, um, I do- I do expect a, a winter suspension request coming from the contractor, just so they don't have to, uh, compromise a product to get it in.
Right.
Especially when we don't have to have it there right now.
But they're also the ones who asked for, to start late.
You're right.
And put more crews on, so-
You're right.
They'll roll the dice on, so.
You're right, you are correct.
That'll be an interesting discussion.
Did well, John, you're right.
So.
Okay, so we've got about six minutes left for portfolio reports before Brian has to get off the phone. So, since we're not doing any, except for John, we will move on to you.
Okay, uh, we all know we've talked about this, uh, hiring a city administrator, trying to get the ball rolling on that. We've all had a lot of discussion on our work putting into this. I believe everybody has seen the proposal from AD2S to help with that pro, process and assistance. Um, I've had lots of conversation with Councilman Fennelon, and I don't know if you, if everybody wants to pull that up and take a peek at it. But I would like to see this move forward, so I would like to propose that we commission, uh, Commissioner, uh, Councilman Fennelon to work with AD2S and move forward and accept that proposal. And along with that, also, if he feels need to make adjustments on a couple things, on some contract negotiation price, let him do that, because he has commented, and we've had some feedback on a couple things, we have done some work on, um, a, uh, he's put out the, uh, job description, and I think there was a cost incurred or gonna be incurred with that for AD2S, and I think there's some negotiation room on that. But to let Councilman Fennelon get moving, I'd like to approve that not to exceed the fifteen thousand, eight hundred, if that was the correct amount.
Okay, discussion, Brian?
Do we, do we need a, do we need a vote on this?
We do if we're gonna spend money.
I, I would, I would agree with this proposal, so, I, I would say that we take a vote on it and, and, uh, to keep this process moving.
Did he understand my full motion on it? It's fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety.
Brian, did you hear? John?
Yep, yep, right there.
Wow.
About the fifteen thousand?
Everybody hears me.
Okay.
I've told that all my life.
So, so you're, you're, okay, you're comfortable with, uh, John's motion to spend fifteenth, up to, up to fifteen thousand dollars and to let, um, Councilman Fennelon negotiate, continue negotiating the contract to fit whatever the needs are to begin the search for this position?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Brian's got the first?
So I, I will make a motion to-
Brian's the first.
If you, if you want.
Yes.
And I'll second.
John will second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, we have a motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. We need a roll call?
We do need a roll call. So Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sharon, yes? All in favor, aye. Okay, motion passes. So we will let Councilman Fennelon know that he can, when he returns from overseas, or while he's there, he can work on it.
He'll start the conversation by emailing.
Good.
To get things working, so.
Excellent, yeah, the sooner the better. Okay, no further business, auditor, no report, so I have a motion to-
Adjourn, so.
Adjourn. Motion by John, all in favor?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.
Hey, look at that, we actually came in under an hour.
Yeah, by two whole minutes.
You know that?
Have fun at dinner, Brian.
You don't need a second to, uh, motion to adjourn.
Go to dinner, Brian, bother.
I was trying to keep it on track.
But yeah, I found that out, I never knew that.